First thing on our agenda is to approve the agenda of this July tenth, twenty twenty five, of the Deering County Board of Supervisors. Motion to approve or alter the agenda?
Make a motion to alter, not remove, item number eight until a further date.
You got a continuance in?
Yes.
For a continuance?
Yeah, I have a second for a continuance on item eight.
Alright, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Alright. Close, none. We have the minutes from July third, twenty twenty five, the board's motion to approve or correct?
I won't make that motion because I think that we need more details, so if you want to make a motion, that's fine, we can have some discussion.
You have the motion for a second?
I'll second that with discussion.
Okay, my discussion on this is that, in particular here, we do this once a month and we have the department heads come in once a month to give us an update. And we just have an overview of who was here, we don't have a bullet point or anything to substantiate the more important points that those folks are here for, and they're here for a reason, obviously. So I think it's important for us to document one or two bullet points, to give us some background as we go back for reference, to see what they're talking about. I can give you an example of what I'm talking about here. For example, when the assessor comes in, he talked about a couple of things that I think were pretty important. Number one was the Department of Revenue and equalization process that he's going through, so we all understand that. The second thing that I think is really important, and it impacts us fairly heavily when it comes to our taxation capabilities, is what we're doing with Kim Grow and those portable tanks. It's gonna be a huge issue as we move forward, so I think it's good for us to keep a running documentation of where we go on a month-to-month basis. Another one I think that's important from an example standpoint is when public health person comes in, Katie here, she talked about expenses and revenue. We had a fairly substantial amount of revenue that came in. I think we should have some documentation to help us understand where they are, and that kind of, again, goes with the running balance. I can give you some more examples, but just one or two bullet points, especially at the beginning of the month when we have a department head meeting, so we all have that for reference as we go back. And I make notes, and I'm sure you guys do as well, but I think it should be public documentation so that we can have that for future reference.
Mr. Chairman, may I just, on information, in case people didn't know, the minutes are just a summary, a short summary of what happened. You don't usually go into details in the minutes.
And I'm not asking for detail, I'm just asking for a bullet point or two.
I'm just giving you that statement.
I understand that, but again, it goes back to, you know, this is a supervisors meeting, and I think we need that for reference for us for the future.
So you are directing for the future?
I'd like to see a correction to these minutes to reflect that as we move forward, especially at the beginning of the month for department head meetings.
If it's gonna be a motion to amend, it should be a motion to amend stating what your actual changes you want in there.
Yeah, I was just waiting for other input here from anybody else, but thank you.
I think at times it would be handy to have that backstory moving forward into it, so a constant reminder of what is going on and everything. To the point of how much detail, I could see that that could be.
I understand, yeah, I'm not asking for a lot of detail.
But you're saying like bullet point, a sentence to that point.
One or two bullet points per individual, so we have reference to go back to if we hear. Again, I think it's important because we're obviously asking to come here for a reason.
And are you gonna provide those for the correction?
I can, I have notes as well, I'll review those with you and Chad so that we can make sure we're consistent, but I'd like to make.
We're always consistent, but yeah, that's fine, after the meeting you go upstairs and you give that to me, so I can fix it. It's not gonna go today again, because I gave you guys this package Monday.
I was in here Monday, mine was not.
Or Tuesday.
Yeah, and you were.
So wasn't he?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gone.
Right.
But those packets were up there, and you guys knew that they were up there Tuesday.
I have an email, everyone's welcome to send an email.
Okay.
So are you.
I've talked about that before.
And I did send it to you, and I still had to change it by email.
I don't have an email.
That's fine, anyway.
Do you have a motion to amend that?
A motion to amend the minutes to include some, two to three bullet points per department head or elected official, so for reference.
Is that good?
Yes.
Any other discussion on that? If not, all those in favor of the minutes, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion to approve the minutes, but we can't even do that right now, because we don't work together. We are.
Make a motion to amend the current minutes with the bullet points to be supplied by Mr. Dietrich to the board secretary to put into the minutes. You can make that kind of motion as long as you're all aware of what those.
And we will work together to make sure that we're consistent with those bullet points.
Do that, just make a motion.
That would be the original motion.
That's correct, yeah, so I'll make a motion that we.
So you're removing, you're removing the first motion?
Yeah, okay.
You're removing the motion for.
Okay, I can remove the original motion.
Yes, thank you.
But then I'll make a, does Chad need to second that?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none?
So do we need to make an amendment then?
We've already made the amendment.
So, no?
Well, now you're just doing the final approval.
No, we're doing the finals, yeah.
The final?
Yeah.
I thought we did two amendments already, then that's, if we vote twice.
Let's just take one more vote, is everybody okay with what we've done?
Alright, motion to approve the corrected minutes from July third, twenty twenty five.
I'll make that motion as Assistant County Attorney has directed so that we are inconsistent. Agreeing up with the bullet points that we're gonna provide to the auditor for the change in the amended minutes.
And that's with removing your first motion to approve them?
Yeah, we did that already.
Okay.
Yes, correct.
Any second?
Yeah, I was second what we're doing.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. We never had that much time involved, so got that one done. Caleb said he would, gave his monthly update last month, so I don't think he's been today. Nathan, you're up, please.
Okay. Here's this year's homestead and military credits.
Come in the chair. Is this, we can get here a little later?
You have to sign it. And, no, to this.
Keep getting longer.
Keep getting longer.
Can you give me?
We had some people.
You explain to Steve what we're up to.
Yeah, you give me a little, I understand the credits, but, yeah.
Any bullet points saying that?
Tell them what we're doing.
Okay, so this is all the new homesteads for twenty twenty five. So the deadline for signing up for homestead for the twenty twenty five is July first.
Okay.
And so after July one, we have, we give these to you, we recommend the approval of all these, that we make sure that they are living in the house. If they have, if there's ever any question of whether or not you should approve or deny, we'll put it in a separate folder. And then it's your, ultimately your decision on whether or not you wanna deny a homestead or a military exemption, but typically, nobody fills out a homestead if they're not actually living in the house. And then there also is the military credits, and then there's the disabled vets, homestead, and then here as well, so.
So, do you have a total, what does that amount to from a dollar perspective, do you know?
Well, no.
I know it's gonna vary, but.
It does vary because it depends on which township you're in. You know, the credit is, you know, forty-eight fifty, or homestead is forty-eight fifty off your assessed value.
Correct.
So depending on, so you take, you know, forty-eight, twenty-five times whatever your levy rate is in your township, so depending on where they live. And then there's also the sixty-five plus, which is another additional ten thousand dollars off of your assessed value.
Well, two of us hit that mark.
Yeah, so.
There you go.
So your taxes will go down.
And that's always good.
This is moving target, decent move for this year.
This is just this, you signed up for homestead just this year.
Twenty-five, twenty, for twenty-five, twenty-six, correct?
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
Twenty-four, twenty-five, okay, twenty-four, twenty-five. Okay, but how does that impact us from a dollar perspective then, when we look at total revenue?
I think the homestead is backfilled by the state, right?
You.
The original homestead is.
Original.
You get it back, you get a credit back, I mean, not, not all of it, obviously, but you get that, some of that credit back.
Right, the homestead is backfilled by the state, it's not at the county level. The sixty-five plus is not backfilled, that is an exemption, so we're losing that revenue.
Do we know ballpark what that revenue is?
We can.
Is it a million, is it a ten thing? I'm sure it's not.
As far as the, for how many people signed up for sixty-five, or sixty-five plus, I can probably run a query to find out, you know, kind of an idea of how much revenue.
You can, interesting.
Yeah.
The only thing to take away.
Right, find out how much, how much that's gonna be, if you would, please.
Okay.
And I think that'll all be, well, that'll, your taxable value will have all that, you know, for the difference between twenty-four and twenty-five, that taxable value. That's gonna show you, I mean, we're probably still an increase even with the sixty-five plus credit.
Because of appreciation, that goes to it.
Well, we can count how many, in this package, just for this year alone, we just count our applications for the senior.
Right, I just, I'll try to run a query to see how many people are signed up.
Total.
Total, because that's gonna go, that went from six thousand to ten thousand for twenty-four to twenty-five.
Right.
So it's more, you know, you're losing more taxable.
Pretty significant. You've got a percent value, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Sure, sixty-six.
That's big, I'll try and figure out, I'll try and get some numbers for you on that.
And our ballpark would just be close, and we can understand how that impacts, and maybe we could talk about that later, Kelly, then when you get that number, we could see how that impacts everything from a financial standpoint.
The sixty-five plus is just pretty much on nade.
Right.
We have a different number of credit in our office, which is for low income, which we're gonna sell that to.
And that's, you have to do that every year, right? They have to fill that application every year for low income, yeah. So that, that's the number that's always comes in.
And that comes off of your taxes, it doesn't come off your assessed value.
Right, totally different.
Yep.
Does it come off at a percent of whatever your low income is?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's like, I think the maximum is like twenty-six thousand dollars, I can't remember exactly. If your income was over that, you weren't eligible. If your income is less than that, then you're eligible to receive a percentage credit off of your taxes.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you very much.
Yep, no problem. You know, it's interesting though, because the legislature doesn't, totally doesn't type, they're looking at changing the way the tax system, I don't know if you guys looked at that, it didn't pass, but.
Yeah.
They were gonna get rid of rollbacks altogether, everything was gonna go a hundred percent, and then they were looking at homestead being the seventy-five thousand dollars off of your, your assessed valuation, you take that off. So what the legislators don't, they'll think about is the smaller towns like Hillsborough, where half the city of Hillsborough probably doesn't have assessed values inside of that, so you're wiping out the taxable value for the city. So they, they really, hopefully that does pass, but they're talking about reintroducing that again, so that will really cause a problem to our small towns. Salem, Hillsborough, people don't have that much assessed value.
And you carry that through your association back to the state?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Make sure everybody's aware of that as well, because we can do that too, obviously.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is.
Good to know, yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Rich, you're up, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Chuck. I'm here today to ask for renewal signature on the New London Community School District twenty-eighty agreement for school resource officer. I brought a few statistics and data for you. We started our agreement with New London School in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year as part-time. Our contract was signed August twenty-first and twenty-third for forty-six dollars and ninety-four cents per hour, up to a maximum of twenty-two thousand nine hundred and five dollars. The school was invoiced for the total of twenty-two thousand nine hundred and five dollars that school year, and they paid it in full. The second contract was last year. We had some delays getting that contract signed because of the twenty-eighty agreement. We finally got it signed on ten-ten of twenty-four, so we missed about three and a half months of our contract by the time we got it signed and got someone trained and got him in there, it was mid-November. Our contract was for forty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents per hour, with no cap, hour-to-hour reimbursement. We began that in November, and we invoiced and received payment for forty-five thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents for the last school year that just ended. Our third contract is what I have brought before you today, it's for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. We changed the total to reflect the cost increase for the hourly salary and the insurance changes that took effect July first. So our contract that I will lay before you here in a moment is fifty dollars and twenty-two cents per hour, no cap on the, on the dollar amount or the hour-to-hour reimbursement. Above, our, the above costs that we invoiced and received are actual costs, and what I mean by that, it's the hourly rate of the deputy, the hourly county cost for healthcare, the hourly county cost for dental care, county cost of IFRS, FICA, and some miscellaneous expenses such as training, uniforms, vehicle expenses, gear, and costs prorated as per the portion of their time at the school. Just a little contiguous county comparisons, I did some checking. Des Moines County has two contracts, one with Minneapolis, one with Danville. Our county, our county cost for this contract is fifty-twenty-two for the next year. Theirs with Minneapolis and Danville is fifty-three eighty-nine per hour. They bill each school exactly fourteen hundred and forty hours. I don't know how they come up with that, that number, other than that's the number of hours that they participate in a school year. So they bill twice a year, July one and January one, and they get approximately thirty-eight thousand dollars, which would be seven hundred and twenty hours per bill. Jefferson County has a contract with Peaking Schools, they're charging forty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents per hour, and they're like us, they get reimbursed for actual hours that their deputies in the school. They calculate their hourly rate by including the hourly wage, FICA, IFRS, and insurance costs into their total cost of reimbursement. New London School District would like to continue a one-year contract, they said that they would like to bring it before their, their, their school board each year for renewal. They didn't want to do a longer contract, but they would like to start doing it a little earlier instead of this timeframe, they'd like to do it in March or April, so they have it signed and ready to go July first. So next year I would presume that we'd be wanting to go in the spring. I did speak with the New London administration within the last month, and they, they and I have evaluated Deputy President Roberts, who is our school resource officer, and he had remarkable feedback from both principals, the superintendent and I, as to feedback they received from the staff, the students, administration, and their board. And then, of course, our time of the third of the year that he's working on the road. The only other thing I have to add is, we've had some confusion the last couple of years about getting it registered with the Secretary of State, and I would like to be offering that my office will take care of that, we'll make sure it gets registered with the Secretary of State. Any questions?
Yeah, probably just a couple, so you're gonna take care of that registration, because I know that's been an issue over the last couple of years, so once this passes, everybody signs it, if we do, then you'll, you'll make sure that happens and let us know when that all happens, so that we're all up to date.
Yes, sir.
So there's no confusion then. I think the other thing that we were a little confused on as a group, you probably know more about this than I do, Chad, but we were a little confused on the reimbursement of the, as that money comes back, does that come back to the sheriff's office and then you write a check to, is that you, Kelly, that you would get a check from? And I guess my question to that is, why is that the process rather than it coming directly to the treasurer?
That's been our process for all invoices and claims that we do. For example, if, if a lawyer asks us to process a foreclosed home, you know, John Doe of Henry County's foreclosed on his home, this lawyer firm is handling that. We invoice for costs affiliated with that, and, and we run that all through our accounting system, that way our sheriff's office accounting system is invoiced, money's received, money's paid out. This is no different. Another good example would be the city of New London's law enforcement contract. We invoice them monthly, we receive the cash back, we deposit it usually within the day, and then at the end of the month, we, we send a, a check to the treasurer for that same funding. On a monthly basis, it's, it's a six-figure number, normally, you know, I don't know the exact numbers, but it's usually anywhere from eighty to a hundred thousand dollars. Depending on if we have a home that we propose on, it could be a couple hundred thousand dollars. So that's just to keep our basic accounting system correct, it's been that way for decades, I'd like to continue it that way, I don't see any reason to do it. We, we put it in an interest-bearing account in the same bank that the treasurer bank's with. We do it side by side, and then at the end of the month, we, we deposit a check to the treasurer.
You're getting the interest on that.
I'm sorry, Kelly, can you stick up to that?
You're getting the interest on that, the county's not.
The county is getting that interest, we are the county. We are, I don't.
It doesn't go through my books, my, and I'm not going to question that.
Okay.
But the, the SRO payment, the auditor's office has no way to balance that hours, they don't have that invoice from the school. So in my opinion, just my opinion, the invoice should go to the auditor's office to be submitted to my office for that checking, the dollar amount. The SRO is only within the last couple of years, so it's not part of a decade-long thing.
Sure.
The E nine-one-one checks that you get, they come directly to us.
Right.
They don't go into your accounts, they don't go, what's the difference between that and the SRO?
Well, the E nine-one-one is an E nine-one-one invoice and, and revenue, and, and this is sheriff's office invoice and revenue. We, we have to keep our accounting straight also. It, it, it's county money regardless, I, I know it doesn't go through your books, but it's still county money, my money is county money, my, my invoice is county money. The, the labor paid out comes out of my budget, and this revenue goes back as revenue from my budget. And then within, like I said, within a day or two, it's deposited with Pilot Grove Bank, which is an interest-bearing account. And then within, by the end of the month, it's always, the sheriff's office writes a check to the, to the treasurer and deposits it there, so regardless, it's gaining interest for the county, and it's, and it's getting through the treasurer's office by the end of the month. I, I could, I could slate hundreds of issues, because we write checks for things all the time, and we receive revenue checks on a daily basis. It's just simple accounting for us, is that we invoice it, we receive the money back, we deposit it, at the end of the month, we send it to the treasurer, that's the way we do all of our stuff. I don't see a reason to change one thing.
Chad, under Mark, any thoughts, conversation on that?
On this one issue?
On this issue. Because we're talking very specifically about an SRO, right, Rich?
Right. I compared a lot to our contract with the city of New London to cover their overnight shift. We invoice that, we receive the money, we deposit, and it goes to the treasurer within, within a short period of time.
If you, if, if I get called out on that, I have no backup, all I have is, is Rich's paper that says this much money goes to SRO, I have no backup. I can't, I can't back him up, I can't back the county up, because I have nothing other than it says this much money goes to SRO. It's very generic, from an accounting point of view, I don't know how you wanna view that.
And we, we have that accounting in our, in our books, if you will.
Your system has the ability to document and talk about what Kelly has, and she needs some kind of backup. Robin, how does that tie into you?
The hours, the pay, the hours, it's only the hours, I gotta know how many hours.
It's on every timesheet, and it's, and it's on every invoice.
You're talking hours as a SRO?
There lies my misunderstanding, is the hours, okay?
Okay.
How many hours is, it's un-stated how many hours he's gonna be working for the county, exactly, or for the, for the, for the school, school system.
It's in the contract.
It's unlimited hours, I think you said.
It is based on a five-day, forty-hour week, and it's, it's reimbursement, so if, if he works that forty-hour week and he comes in on Friday night for a football game, he'll, he'll go home one of those days a little early and come back for the football game.
But my problem is, after he has his forty hours in for the school system, and then he's on, has to go back out, we are paying, after he gives up, what, four, three hours, whatever it is.
Right.
Then we have to pay, we have to pay the overtime, then, after the forty-three hours.
We talked about this last year.
I know, but that's why I can't, I.
I'd be happy to try and rehash this.
I, I, that's, I need to have it rehashed.
Yeah, so simply put, with, with our deputy employment, or jailers, or anybody else that works there, except for me, quite frankly, every single employee, if they get called out for an overtime issue, whether it's a car crash, chaos of a storm, whatever the case may be, they get time and a half regardless.
I, I understand.
So it's not over forty, it's whenever they get called out outside of their schedule.
My question is, anytime that happens, the rest of the county is paying that portion that was caused by New London School District.
It's not that way though, Mark, that's what I'm trying to explain to you. So you take a deputy that's not the SRO, pick one, Cassie Kraft, she's a regular deputy, works the road, if she gets called out because there's a major incident, she gets time and a half, whether she's at hour two or forty-two. Same goes for Preston, who's our SRO, if we call him out on a Saturday night because we got a, a shooting, he's gonna get time and a half, whether he was worked at New London that week or not, period.
That was never made clear to me, like that before, I'm sorry.
No, that's alright, that, that's a fact, though. The only one that doesn't get that time and a half if they're called out is me, every other single employee gets time and a half. Every one of them. That helps.
Yeah, I do not understand that.
Wasn't quite sure about that.
Yes.
With Preston, if that situation would happen.
Whether, whether he works at the school, like, for right now, he's working the road because it's summertime.
Right.
If he gets called out tonight for, for an incident, he'll get time and a half whether, whether it's for one thing or another, period. If a dispatcher gets called out because they have a lot of stuff going on in dispatch, they're gonna get time and a half, same with a clerical person.
Thank, thank you for that info, man.
Yeah.
I'm good.
Chad, you're thinking?
I'm just trying to think how to further explain, I, I think the initial concern was, we have the deputy in the school absorbing those, that work time, and then something happens out on the road where that deputy has to dedicate time there. Is it fair for the county to absorb that overtime payment instead of the school?
But, but if the school asks him to work more than forty hours, they'll, they'll pay overtime for that, yes.
But if they, if they work him right up to the, the line, the overtime line, and then in his other duties, he has to work overtime, I think the concern initially was, why should the county have to pay that overtime and not that time come out of the school's allocation?
I understand what your concerns are, but that's not how our overtime's calculated, so I, I think that's irrelevant, no disrespect.
No, I, I, I think that was maybe the original thought there or whatnot.
Yeah, it was for me, making sure I told you.
And that, that's absolutely not the case, that's not how our overtime's calculated.
Bill, this is not, it has the deal of the contract, but what happens for the future, when we move to get the request from other school districts?
Well, I, I think we've covered this the last few years also, I hope we have to face that dilemma, Mark, because I think it's protecting our students, our, our school kids from kindergarten through high school, and, and it's a dilemma I'm ready to embrace, not be fearful of, I think it's something we as a county should embrace. We're protecting our children, that's our future, and if we're, if we're worried that it's gonna be an expense, that we're not gonna be able to protect our children, that's a great thing, I think we should be faced with that dilemma already. There's only one school in the county that doesn't have a school resource officer now, it's Waco. I talked with the sheriff of Washington County yesterday, they haven't talked to him in about a year and a half, they haven't talked to me in about a year, they don't really want one for some reason, which I think is sad. I, I think the, the Waco students, which are split between two counties, they need that protection, it's twenty twenty-five, and this crap happens every day, pardon my language, it happens every day. Sandy Hook didn't think they'd ever get hit, Perry, Iowa certainly didn't think they'd get hit, and they've been hit, they have fatalities at those schools. I personally, as a sheriff, I think if Waco hollers, we should listen really closely, and we should try and help them in any single way that we can help them. I don't know the answer.
That's what I was.
I'll be coming to you guys, asking to help me with an answer if that happens, and I hope they do, I, I think it's something we should already be looking at.
The majority, what you said, I, I do agree with you, I, I think there's, there's a, an element of our responsibility, but I also feel strongly that whatever jurisdiction that that school might be in, New London PD, I think they need to play some part or have some ownership or, or stake in that game, because it is New London.
What do you, what do you do about Waco, there's four jurisdictions.
I, I, I'm well aware of the, the county divide.
Two counties and two cities.
The cities and, yeah.
It's difficult, in my, in my, in my opinion, as the sheriff, I should begin with Sheriff Snyder saying, we gotta do something.
I can't worry about that up there, you know, what Washington County, that's, that's up to them, but I would, I would sure like to see New London.
They can't, that's simply why they called me in the first place. They can't, that's simply why they called me in the first place, they can't, they cannot. You know, and and New London's a good chunk of our county, let's face it, that school district, it covers probably, I don't know, thirty percent of our county.
I didn't say a third of it, probably, you know.
I don't know exact numbers on that, but probably close to a third of our county. And and we as county officials, we should take care of that third of our county, the same as we take care of Hillsborough.
But I I would, and I I I will stand until I'm convinced otherwise, I'd like to see New London play a part in that. I I'd like to encourage them to step up the plate because the majority of their people are New London. I mean,
Yep.
they have a a big stake in that population base going there.
Yep.
And I think they are are playing that.
Sure, and and I think they have stepped up, their school board is is committed to funding it. They're funding our time, one hundred percent of Preston's time is reimbursed by the city of, or the school of New London. Yeah, they're paying this year fifty dollars and change per hour for 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 us to be there. To me, that's a big commitment. You know, I I understand that the people of Rome are are paying a portion of it, but it's being reimbursed by the school of New London. So they're one hundred percent paying it for his time.
And as far as what you said, good results, good reports.
It's great, it's improved over our first.
I have not heard anything negative about that.
No, it's been fabulous.
Which is is a an accommodation or an accolade to present what's going on.
Yeah.
So with that, all our questions are answered.
I think so, I just think we need some reassurances between the sheriff and the treasurer and the auditor that we have some transparency on how this works in case somebody's audited, they have a thorough understanding of what they need to do to support the documentation.
I've seen Robin's um timesheet, I don't know if helping out maybe a modified timesheet for Preston. Maybe that splits out how much time, not just handwritten on the side, that actually divides it out, how much time is here, how much time is there. I don't, I mean, that's just went through my mind as a modified timesheet to help understand that, how much is where and how much.
I don't I don't know how better we can document it on his timesheet because he puts his hours down as an SRO and is that hours down outside of being an SRO? Um, but we can certainly try, we will certainly try, and we we have a report in our accounting system that shows every dollar invoiced and every dollar received. I I'd be happy to send those reports to you.
And as far as the the checks actually being submitted to you versus being submitted to the auditor for us, that's the part where we can't backtrack, I can't backtrack that that that's the amount that he got. I have no way to backtrack, if you wanted to add um with your SRO paper, with the the whole list of your other receipts, maybe that invoice a copy, something.
Sure.
Like a double invoice, you know, one good you and one good you.
You're covering yourself as well as covering the county.
Oh, sure, yeah, and we we have all that documentation, i- if you want me to share it with you, I I certainly can, I can share it with the treasurer and the auditor and the supervisor.
Those two are comfortable with, and they they're the ones that are really.
I'm not trying to be non-transparent at all, I I have nothing to hide.
And that's 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 exactly, you know.
Yeah. But I I would use, I I don't, I I hope I really don't sound rude here, but where does that end? Do I do I have to start sending invoices for New London City Contract? Do I have to send it for, I I this will sound silly, but every time I buy tires or have an oil change? Because it's the same principle to me, and I'm I'm really not trying to be rude at all.
You do that when you do a claim though, don't you? Don't you submit a receipt when you do a claim?
Yes.
Yeah, because we see those.
Yes. If you want us to send an invoice with a copy of the check each month from the school, we can do that. To me, it's just a waste of time and paper, but if you want it, I I certainly will do it.
Would that satisfy what you need?
How about how about sheriff's foreclosure sales and garnishments, that it's all the same principle to me. That's normal business on a daily basis for us.
It's been, you gotta have something so like if the state auditors come in and the state auditors say, well, you have an SRO that is also contracted with, and that, and then they're they're gonna ask for that contract because they've asked, they've hit me up for quite a few contracts.
Sure.
Have they asked you about that?
Every year, yep, and I provide it to them every year. So I would, I I I really hope I'm not being rude here, Robin, but if they're asking you about that stuff, why don't you just send it for me?
I have.
I I can give them all.
I have, but then they always come back and says, why is it not also here?
We're also held accountable for the other offices.
I I I understand that, I'm really not trying to be rude, I.
I mean, I got, I got dinged for another office putting their own physical year on something. And it's like we asked them and they told us incorrectly, we still got in trouble with state auditor.
Sure.
Because of what they told us, so it's a CYA, you know?
Yeah, I I I understand, auditors are difficult, but.
Yeah.
I think it's a simple fix briefly, to help to help us out with the state auditor, that's all we're asking.
Yeah, sure.
So, with that.
We know, we all know how cumbersome that can be, you know, I I don't have any difficulty there.
So what I'm I'm hearing is we're in agreement if we have these little revisions.
Okay.
But we, I would like to have us have that, you know, in the contract, and with, not that part, but at least Steve looked it over, you looked this one over, Steve?
I have not seen this at all on the way in.
This is the exact same contract as we've had the last two years with the dollar amount change.
Can we provide that so we can have it then? So, just give it to Steve.
Would you like to make a copy right now?
Sure. Make a copy, man.
It's right behind you, I was about to crowd in there. Um, while he's doing that, I do have a question for you.
Yeah.
And we don't have to cover this today because it's not on the agenda, but in the near future, I know you're in conversation with Salem on a twenty-eighty agreement, so.
Yes.
If you would mind giving us an update on that in the near future so we understand where we're at.
Sure, uh, my my update is really simple and I can tell you. Um, the s- the city council met last week and they and they are entertaining the idea of a law enforcement contract.
Like?
Like for us to cover their law enforcement purposes under a twenty-eighty agreement, because right now we're just doing.
So it's another county or another city, like?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Uh, theirs would be twenty-four seven three sixty-five. Um, they're forming a public safety committee that will come and meet with me and kind of hash it out. And then when we feel that we've come to an agreement, uh, I will send our version to the county attorney's office, they will send their version to their city attorney, which I believe is Lynch Dallas.
Yeah.
And and then we'll proceed if we can.
Because law enforcement for this county, correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't read it, but is required by code to have something in place, right? Either a in-house PD or a contractual agreement with the SO.
Or or something alternative, yeah. Right now.
Normally, that's what it is.
Right now, we have very little with anybody. Um, I'm working on all the cities.
Like Rome, where you follow them.
New London's the only town we have any kind of agreement with, and it's just agreements to cover their shifts overnight. Um, we have, um, I believe Hillsborough has a two thousand and seven agreement with the previous sheriff that says we'll cover you. It's really generic version of the contract, but it says we'll cover you, no cost.
The Rome Olds?
Nothing, Westwood and Hillsborough and Mount Union, the best of my recollection, are the only ones that had an signed agreement in two thousand and seven. And Mount Union doesn't exist, Hillsborough and and Westwood still have that agreement, I think all the other cities are nothing. I've talked to many of them, and I think many of them are interested in some type of an agreement. Uh, basically just to say, we'll cover each other's back when help is needed. Uh, but, um, nobody has signed. Yes, and I did send those to Steve three years ago, maybe?
For the community patrol.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And and we, I I think you guys said looks good so far.
Yeah.
Uh, but but we haven't proceeded with it, of course, right? So, uh, for signature, because the schools want it back and they want to get it enacted, how do we proceed with that?
Oh, we need Steve to take a look at it right, see if it says it's correct.
Right.
Okay, hopefully soon, we can act.
We can take care of it.
Okay. So do I need to, may I get back on the agenda for next week then?
We do not need to be back on the agenda, we can take care of it.
Okay.
So ask me on the agenda if you're gonna vote to approve it next week.
But you you might have to come back.
Is it possible to to pass a motion to uh to to sign it barring setback from Steve?
And I don't like doing that for stuff.
So do you want to retain this, so he can sign it if Steve approves it? And that's what held us up last year, is what it got passed from Steve to to their attorney back and forth for three months.
Well, we can hold over if you want, if you don't want to come back or.
Well, I that's what I was asking you.
Do you want to come back?
Yeah, sure.
Then then you go back to it, if you don't get in trouble.
So with that then, um.
So, Robin, just put it on the agenda.
Yeah, there you go, okay, that's what I was gonna say, thank you.
Since you are here, Rich.
Yes.
Just take care of this other one, too.
Okay.
And just, uh.
Next week?
No, 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 this one, right, no, this one right here, what you handed me.
Yeah, sure, that'd be great.
I just, a letter, the receipt today from the sheriff, you name, or actually, it's from Jesse Bell, chief deputy. It's a approval and appointment of reserve officer per code, uh, I have code eighty D point seven for a a reserve deputy sheriff officer, and the name is Ian Longfield. So with that, we have this approval to appoint him, it's under his recommendation.
Great, so Ian Longfield works at the Penn Century out here, he lives on the west end of the county. Uh, he he has passed all his physicals and and mental health testing, all that jazz, as required by the academy and Iowa code. Uh, and this is just a a formal letter to tell the academy you guys agree.
Perfect, thank you.
You want us to keep this or you want to keep?
Uh, I'd like to have the original back if I could. You certainly can take a copy if you'd like.
There's office needs that happen, the officer is fine.
He moved in from out of state, so uh I don't know his family. They live uh kind of by Derek, if you know where Derek lives. They live across the road from Derek. In uh, drawing a blank on the gentleman's name, he's deceased now, but he used to sell cars. Sorry, sorry, thank you.
That is the extreme west.
Pardon?
That is the extreme west.
Yeah, sure, names are forgotten, names are forgotten, thank you. Thanks, Rich.
Next on our agenda, it was a resolution nineteen day twenty twenty-five, cancellation of outstanding checks. We've all received a a copy of them, of this. It's a, whereas the Hennepin County has the following checks dated before July one twenty twenty-four, reported as outstanding general basic account, uh, check number one four nine seven oh two and one four nine nine three oh. First one for the amount of forty dollars and seventy-eight cents, and the second one for ten dollars. And then the next one is out of general supplemental, check number one five one two two zero for two hundred and thirty-five dollars. And then we have, uh, whereas the county has checks dated May twenty-second, twenty-five, reported and not redeemed, uh, check number one five zero zero nine six for seventeen thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars and ten cents. And check number one five zero zero nine six, the same check as the one prior, for six hundred seventy-four dollars and twenty-one cents. Be resolved, the Hennepin County Board of Supervisors authorize the auto duty to auto duty cancel the outstanding checks and credit the amount to the council which the checks have been drawn. Dated this day, the tenth day of July twenty twenty-five, at the regular meeting of the Hennepin County Board of Supervisors, not last night. Before, uh, we have a mo- we'll have a motion to approve it, then we need a little discussion, explanation, motion to approve, or one of you?
Yeah. Motion to approve.
Motion, we have a second? Now, Robin, Kelly, please help us again, I know the first two, they just were never cashed.
Right.
But the second one, it's a double check.
It was just a double check, it had to be divided out. It had to be divided out, you had a transport and then you had a membership dues and went all to the same place, they needed one separate check.
So that's what the difference is in those two dollar balances and membership dues and transport dues?
So you, they've sent back the check and they've been voided, and now we're resending in another check.
We're just sending one check for that last one. The other, the others have already, weren't like we've been right now or taken care of, because it was twenty twenty-four.
But Taylor, it's just a clerical thing, they wanted on their part.
On their part, they couldn't cash the check and go through with it, the judge wanted it.
Any other discussion on that?
So these monies, then they go back into the basic fund or the general fund or the supplement?
Whatever it's written on, it's on your resolution.
Move back into the supplement, please, please.
Okay.
Okay.
Will punk?
Will call on this, please.
Dietrich?
Yes.
Lindy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Next on our agenda, review the treasurer's annual report, we've all received that, and the semi-annual report. We have, I have not actually had time to really look at it yet, Kelly, but I will look at on it. And any questions, if you if you, if you have a good?
Yeah, I do just have one question, Kelly, maybe you could think about this and give us an update later. So the balance at the end of the fiscal year was seven hundred ninety thousand dollars, nine hundred nine dollars. Is that consistent in line with the last two or three years, or do you know how to compare it?
I I don't, I'm, the only thing I was looking at was that that we pretty much spent everything that we brought in. There's only like a million dollar difference between the two, the redone expenses, all.
Okay, so, yeah, so what we're talking about here is we had income of about fifty-five million dollars, and we spent off fifty-four million dollars, right? Okay, so, yeah, we can sort of look at that, Mark's got those numbers, I just like to make comparisons and we're.
We got the whole report, okay. Uh, next is, um, subcommittee, anybody? Chad, you have any subcommittee?
No, I do not.
I have next, you have some?
I did, yeah, I had a Russ meeting yesterday, and we talked, uh, really with our first annual meetings, we elected officers. I know everybody's familiar with who's on Russ, the various counties that are there, so we got Jefferson, Henry, Keakuck, Van Buren, Lee, and Des Moines. Did I get them all? I think I did. So, uh, within those counties, we, um, elected officers and then responsibilities, which goes back to the various subcommittees that are on it. So that was taken care of, and then we talked a little bit, and our regular meeting about where we're at with, um, income and what Russ has been doing. I don't know if everybody's familiar with this or not, but Russ does have a pumper truck for septic tanks. So I don't think everybody's aware of that, because, you know, I didn't know it until I got on the Russ board, that, you know, Rural Utility Service Systems does have a pumper truck that they can come out and pump septic systems with as well, and that is income to the folks at at Russ as well, so, um, if anybody's interested, I can give some more details, but I think that's probably a pretty good opportunity for the people in the county because we are a member. Other than that, there wasn't anything significant, uh.
Do you know what they charge for the pump?
Yeah, I don't right now, uh, the conversation was just kind of like a general more broad discussion, and their updating rates this year, so.
I think a one four hundred, I think, last time I had it, probably.
It's probably competitive with, uh, leases and some of those folks. And leases is making some hands on stuff, you know? Other than that, that was my only subcommittee this week, and then just some computer work. And I think we have a, I think we have a class we have to finish this week. A, I used to have work. That's coming up here for finalization. And then, uh, one last thing, and Mark, was to ask you and and Chad, that ISAC meeting is coming up in August, can you guys talk about that?
I've worked on it, uh, I think the first day of the, the annual, okay?
Okay.
And that is the twentieth through the twenty-second, right?
It sounds like.
Twenty-third, oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Do the twenty-third.
Twenty-third is Saturday.
Second, yeah. So we can talk about that a little bit more, Chad, if you'd like, but I know that that interferes or kind of conflicts with the the dates that Judge Peterson wanted to get together with us and Derek to talk about some safety security issues.
So he he's moving that back to the after Labor Day.
Okay, so September fifth?
He was looking into that anyway.
Because there's a note from Derek out there, asking some questions about dates so we can solidify that. Okay, that's it for me.
Public comments. Public, Bob?
Yeah, okay, a very interesting discussion this morning on the school resource officer for New London. And. And Mr. White, I know you feel that New London City should take more part in the protection of the children that they, they're limited on officers. They've only got three. I know I used to work here part-time and it really stresses that department out. And also, interesting point I'd like to make is you talk about New London School like it's all, the students are from New London, but the biggest majority of the students in the school are rural residents. Like somebody said, it takes up almost a third of the county. So, interesting debate there. And I was curious, I know I can't ask the question, but has there been any progress made on moving upstairs to a larger room? Because I really feel that if we were to have a surprise visit by the state par marshal sometime, when the room is crowded, the county might be forced into doing something. So it's time to, the old expression is shit or get off the pot, okay? Thank you.
To go along with that. Not more of a part, a part. I'd I'd like to see New London PD play a part.
A part.
Not more, but I guess it would be more, but have a part.
If they had the personnel, I'm sure they would.
Yeah.
Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I did. Which one are you talking to?
Well.
Okay, Katie, Katie will do it. I'd like to hit past the idea that these officers are there just to protect the kids. Um, we've seen it on some of the films in London School will post that shows the kids. They interact with these officers. They're no longer cops. They're no longer somebody to be afraid of. There's a cop at this school with a gun. No, 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 they interact with them. They they set examples with them. They they set their whole day that will last with them, I feel, a lifetime. They're learning that these officers are there for more than just protection. They're there to teach them lessons they don't know they're learning. And I think it's, goes past just the protection. I think, I think it's critical.
It's a huge relationship, darling.
Yeah.
I'm, I might add to that. Katie, I appreciate you reminding me of that. Pre- Preston and Carlos, the first year, they help educate not only the students, but the s, the parents and the faculty and the administration. They are teaching all of the New London school people, you know?
The people don't even realize.
No, they don't. And 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 Preston's been really good about not just teaching, not just making his rounds to make sure it's safe, but he he actively participates with everyone from kindergarten through high school and the staff. The staff have been really tickle pink with Preston's ability to come to them and just fraternize and get familiar with and answer questions and help them to be better staff and administration. So, thank you, Katie, for.
Yeah, and I urge all of you, keep it up with all the schools. Don't think you're just hiring a watchman.
That's correct.
We're not just hiring a guard. You're building, you're building a relationship that will last some of these people for a lifetime.
Agreed.
Yeah.
He's become a piece of their community, quite frankly, because the Fourth of July, uh, we had people assigned to parades, parades around the county. Preston called me Friday morning and said, hey, I didn't know New London was having a parade. You care if I switch my thing with so-and-so so I can be at the New London Parade? Because that that's my people. So.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I know, um, that you're not suggesting, I, at least I don't think you're suggesting that Henry County, um, not have a resource officer in New London. But I would just like to elevate this to a higher level and suggest that there are people in Texas who are questioning their, uh, funding disputes and decisions concerning early warning systems that they did not fund. And I think public safety is worth funding regardless of the source of that funding.
I've come from a public safety career. I agree. And I've never once said that. I would like to New London.
I I didn't think you were suggesting that, but.
I would like to see New London play a part of.
I just wanted to reinforce that.
I do, I do have another comment. Uh, as as far as New London, they they do help at the schools. When they have someone on duty, they do circulate through the school as that watchman, as I think Katie said. They they try and be present. They just don't have the resource to be there to do what Preston's doing.
Anybody else? Really?
Uh, last week in here, you know, I mentioned community service for a penalty instead of just applying the reason being. Uh, one of my sons got in some mischief when he was still in school. He had to go face the judge, pay court costs, and he was sentenced to community service. He loved it. He farm-raised kids, so he knew how to work. So anyhow, he made new friends and and maybe it helped make him a better person today, you know, because the experience given back. All right, last week, we, uh, supre, celebrated our nation's birthday. Continental Army, all volunteers from all thirteen colonies. And they fought the Red Blue Snow War that gave us our country. Today, our military is again all volunteer. Henry County firefighters are all volunteer. Volunteers step up. Two volunteers from the Veterans Hall here in town wanted to be good community citizens and give back. So they went out, found sponsors, had T-shirts printed, gave a thousand dollars to the Mount Pleasant, uh, music boosters from the American Legion Post. Gave a thousand dollars to the athletic boosters from the VFW post. And it looks good for veterans to give back to the community. Nineteen eighty-nine, too many little girls signed up to play softball for the first year. Not enough coaches. Some of them weren't gonna get a play. Two high school boys, a junior and a sophomore, volunteered to coach, gave up their summer vacation, part-time jobs to make some money. After the last game, they gave the little girls a pizza party. Some of those same little girls played softball all the way through high school and today, some of those same little girls have little girls of their own playing softball. Many coaches are volunteers. Even some of our firefighters volunteer. Henry County Watchmen are volunteers. There's two of them with us, Melanie Patton and Bill Monroe. And that's his, that's his, uh, published name, by the way, if you don't know. They gave their time and money to save Henry County from that predatory wind turbine company. Four Hers, they found a way to put a m, mural on the Iowa State University Extension Building by volunteering their time. They made the paper, if you didn't see it. I can give that to you. Frank Franklin Graham, Samaritan's Purse, he sent emergency response teams, equipment and supplies to help the Texas flood system. And that just happened this week. You expect, I'm talking about you people in here in the courthouse, you expect us to volunteer and donate to help get you elected and you can't find a few hours to help the conservation department when they're short on help. The ordinance that you've got here uses volunteers and someone else's misfortune to put money in your own bank. Like this doctor in New York that scammed the insurance companies out of twenty-four billion dollars during the COVID pandemic. So I ask you, this ordinance, what's in it for the firefighters, the taxpayers or the communities? We need to pay the firefighters and first responders. Volunteers build our con, country and our communities. And you people are money changers.
Thank you.
Um, I would kind of piggyback on the moving upstairs, getting video. I think today's conversation concerning the minutes is also, um, helpful, um, because I think the minutes obviously can't be word for word, but I think it would be helpful to have video. So, um, Mr. Dietrich, you mentioned going back and finding out what people said. I think if we could go back and see video, that it would be helpful. So, um, I wasn't having to do it and do it privately. It would be more of a county resource. Um, so it's more of a, um, I guess legally, something that the county provides so people could go back and see it later and find out what was said. So if there is a point of contention or, um, a resource for looking back, both county personnel and also the public, I think it's highly important. So I'm not sure where we are with that still, and I will continue to bring it up until we see, um, that happen. I was unable to attend another county's meeting that I've been involved in this week, so I was able to participate by watching the live video of their meeting and then also going back to see what specific people said, what they were talking about with their ordinance. So I think it's critical that that happens here in Henry County very soon. Um, I know I was on the record as saying I'd have a bake sale to make that happen and I'm still willing to do that. So let's get it done.
I just forgot one thing. This is an insert in Mount Pleasant paper. It's the hometown heroes and and you can look through there. I I didn't find any of your names in there, the firefighters and and the police and and sheriff's department, but you guys aren't listening here.
You want to roll back a few years, you might find some names in there from the years past.
Anybody else? Hearing none? Seeing none? Motion to adjourn this meeting?
Make most to adjourn.
One second.
Just for the record, I had fourteen and a half years at the firefighter. I, uh.
Well, okay, well, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
But, uh.
I think I had fifteen years with the rescue squad.
Thank you too.
I had thirty years.
Thank you too. All of you that served.
But they don't want money.
My, uh, youngest brother.
It was a volunteer service.
It's still this. It's still this.
We talked after the meeting, we were going during.
Yeah.
I'll second it. All of those with favorites say aye. I, you are adjourned.
Now we can talk.
Now we can talk.
My, uh, brother's best friend was a volunteer fire.